Hi, how are you?
Good.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. Welcome to the January 9th, 2024 Planning Board Meeting. I'd like to start with the pledge, please.
Lead Institute of the United States of America, Republic of Georgia stands one nation, America, in this vote for liberty and justice.
A few announcements. Item number three, mobile graphics is removed for this evening's meeting. You're here for that? I don't see anybody. It's no longer on the agenda. Make a few announcements. Emergency exits are to your left and right. Restrooms are out the back and to the left. Please be sure to sign the attendance sheet if you have not already. And there are business cards back there at the table in case you need contact information from the Planning Department. Also, on the back tables, a copy of any resolutions that we will be reading tonight along with the agenda. Please silence your cell phones and take all conversations out into the hallway and close the doors, please, so you don't disrupt anyone's business here at the Planning Board meeting. So with that, we have three meeting minutes. I believe everyone was here for these meetings for approval. So anybody have any questions on the October 24th, November 14th, or December 12th meetings?
Nope.
Nope.
Entertain a motion for approval of all three?
Move.
Any moves?
Second.
Go seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Carried five zero. Meeting minutes are approved. Any correspondence? Okay, Boards Committee updates. Dave from the town. I'd like an exciting meeting last night.
It was an exciting meeting last night, I don't know if you watched it or not. But anyway, first, I wanted to say Happy New Year and thanks for serving. Ernie coming back for another term. Very pleased with that. Had some stiff competition, but it's hard to beat 25 years of experience. So we were pleased to reappoint-
We're glad to have him back.
Absolutely, absolutely. Somebody wants to serve, you can't let that experience walk out the door.
Sure.
And I'm looking forward to, you know, 2024. I think it's going to be an exciting year. I think there's a lot going on. We're going to have some experience walking out the door at the end of the month, which we'll probably talk about more at the next meeting, as Kim's getting ready to enjoy a little bit of retirement. But Keith is excited to take on those challenges and we're excited for him as well. As far as news, I think for folks I want to share with you guys, we welcomed Alexis Ogra onto the board last night. She started last night. Ed retired, or I should say didn't seek another term and is enjoying his retirement. And didn't feel as though he could make the commitment, you know. Ed is a dedicated guy and, as you know, he was always here for his meetings and, you know, wants to travel and watch his son coach baseball. And he's got a couple of trips planned and he didn't want to miss that. And Alexis is raring to go and she's been meeting with everybody. She came in and met with all the departments and getting orientation and then she's going above and beyond. She's meeting with us. I had breakfast with her the other morning. I think Mike Kinda met with her this morning, just talking to her a little bit as she's really getting excited about taking on the new challenges of being on the board. Last night's meeting, I'll just mention a little bit of it because on the 18th, we approved to go ahead and try to purchase a piece of property on Brace Road. There's a 10-acre parcel out in front. It's got a big price tag on it. And we've been looking for property for about 10 years, you know, I mean for a new facility for Town Barns. And the facility that we have is not big enough for what we need. Dryer Road doesn't have sewers. There's a lot of earthworks that would be involved. I mean, we looked at a price tag of about $2.5 million to get sewer out there, not even starting with any earthworks. And I think the biggest dilemma that we're having, or one of the biggest dilemmas, is the fact is that we haven't done a revale on our assessments in the Town of Victor in some time. And if you guys know anything, and I'm sure you all know what equalization rates are, we're one of the lowest in the county with an equalization rate of about 76%, 79%, somewhere in that neighborhood. So which means that probably all of us, as we just get ready to pay our tax bill, we're probably at least minimumly 30% under assessed on a residential or what we should be. Having said that, this property that we're trying to acquire, that we're in the process of acquiring, is assessed at about $300,000. So we have to do an independent appraisal. When you buy property or the town, you know, there's laws that govern you. And we bought this property, or we had it independently appraised, and the appraisal came in at 8:50 something. And the owner wanted 1.2. And we basically negotiated a price of $1 million. And that spurred some immediate interest from some residents of possibly trying to put up a permissive referendum. And I don't know if you know what that is, but a permissive referendum, basically when the town buys something or expends money, and you can have a permissive referendum, you can have, a board could vote for their own permissive referendum if they want to put something out for a vote, you know, like when they did a rec center years ago or when we bought Bowton Park. So you could do it for $1,000. You could do it for $100,000. But anyway, the point is, there are some residents that felt that there wasn't enough information. So last night, we shared, the fact is that you have to make some of those decisions in executive session because when you're negotiating for a piece of property, as soon as it becomes public, as you know, tick, tick, tick goes the price tag as people realize the town might be interested in it or somebody. Same thing when you're buying a house. And so anyway, it was a spirited meeting, but I think the residents that came and listened and we shared our thoughts and put things on the table. I think they went away, if not satisfied, certainly more informed. And we just shared what we were doing and why we're doing it and what our thoughts are and, you know, shared some ideas. I mean, like for example, real quickly, that Brace Road Dead Man's Curve, that would never suffice for the trucks, right? They're never going to be able to get out there. But if we secure that piece of property, then ultimately probably the road is going to come around to Anthony Drive at Auction Direct with a light, so the trucks come in and, you know, you guys would be involved in that site stuff. Is there enough room? There's some wetlands there. You know, Labella has worked with us. We've seen some preliminaries. We're not going to touch that. Yes, we've got plenty of room of what we're going to use. It also is contiguous with the property that we currently own over there. All of a sudden now, between what was given to us from the Papillon family and what we purchased a while ago, now all of a sudden we have like a 30-acre parcel over there that we could, you know, put some ball fields on. Maybe move some pickleball courts. You know, there's a vast variety of things that could happen with some of that. So I just wanted to share that and keep you in the loop on that. And I think the other thing that I want to share with you is that the town did move forward with the Ross and Road project. And that was a three or four meetings at least on an open public forum where the residents came down. We talked about it. You guys weighed in on it. The county weighed in on it. And we ended up carving out, and I don't know how much you've been following it, but they were going to put some homes up along the ridge. We took those homes out of it. We got a little bit better buffer. The green space is really pretty significant with that. It's going to be a private road, so we never have to worry about it. They're going to be sold. It's not anything that's subsidized that comes in. They're going to be private residences. And of course, we approve it. And now you guys have to do all the work on it as far as, which is, you know, what planning is when you do the site approval and all those things. So I think that's it in a nutshell. The other thing is, you know, we serve a four-month rotating term or rotating coming to the meetings. In March, I'm going to be pretty busy. So Drew and I talked last night. So I'm going to be here January, February. Drew's going to fill in in March. I'll come back in April and then I'll take one of Drew's, I think I've taken December for Drew. So, you know, we're here. If you need anything, and again, I feel very comfortable calling anybody on this board if I have any questions with what you guys are doing. And I hope that you guys feel the same way as far as giving anybody on the town board a call if there's anything you ever have any concerns about. So have a great year and let's keep doing the good things that we're doing for the Town of Victor. Thanks.
Thanks, Dave. Kim? One more time.
Yes, your next meeting and my last Planning Board meeting will be January 23rd. You mentioned mobile graphics coming off of this agenda. We will be putting them on to that agenda. And then a public hearing for Wyssman Rental. It's a special use permit. It's over on Break-A-Day Road. The applicant is requesting approval for short-term rental at 65, 62 Break-A-Day Road. It requires Planning Board approval of special use permit in order to do short-term rentals. So that's a public hearing. And then any carryovers from tonight?
Great. Thank you, Kim. Okay, first item this evening, an extension of time for the Victor CDR and Jeep Car Wash. They've requested to instruct a car wash in the back of the building. And this is their second 90-day extension building request. And that's 6484 State Route 96. So we do have a draft resolution prepared. Is there any interesting conversation or discussion? Okay, so with that, I will read the resolution. This is application 22SP 2022, Victor Chrysler Dodge Jeep and Ram Car Wash 6484 State Route 96. Whereas by letter dated January 2nd, 2024, Don Temporato on behalf of his client, Victor East Holding Company LLC, the applicant for Victor Chrysler Dodge Ram and Jeep, freestanding car wash project, requested a 90-day extension of time to obtain a building permit in accordance with the Victor Town Code, Section 21131 F2. And whereas Code Section 21131 F2 provides that an applicant shall obtain a building permit for any project that has received site plan approval within one year from the date of the resolution granting site plan approval, whether such approval is conditional or otherwise. If a building permit is not issued within one year, site plan approval shall expire. The one-year period may be extended by the Planning Board or up to two 90-day periods at the discretion of the Planning Board. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town of Victor Planning Board grants a second 90-day extension of time for the project to obtain a building permit. I'll take a motion for approval?
Move.
Ernie moves? I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Carried five zero. Item two, this is not a public hearing, but it is a final subdivision for Collier Park, 606 County Route 9. Owner, Comarc Holdings. Applicants requesting approval to subdivide 12.925 acre parcel into six individual lots with an existing house located at Lot 1. New pool barn is proposed for Lot 1 and Lot 2. This will be a third step in the three-step process for major subdivision. Preliminary plan was approved on October 24th, 2023. Good evening.
Hi, how are you? Brennan Marks with Marks Engineering, representing the applicant. I'm going to spare you guys the whole summary of the project, but I'll just go straight to a couple of changes that we've had. We did receive a letter from Labella in December for some clarifications and some changes on the drawings. We also received some letters from the town and most importantly, Mr. Maynard in request for a couple of minor changes for the stormwater aspects. One of the biggest changes we have is there's an easement been added to the plot dot. The plan's right about in this area. It's 30 by 15. It's the end of that culvert that crosses from the retention pond on the opposite side of the road. Easement's there to the town for maintenance of that end section. We responded back to Labella's comments earlier this week. And I have no issues with what was presented by Labella on MLW's. Bring up any questions you may have on our responses. With that, I guess I don't have really anything else to update to the board other than that train adjustment.
Okay, thank you. Wes, why don't you kind of review where we are in Labella's comments?
Yeah, thanks, Joe.
Sure.
The final subdivision plans that Labella reviewed were fairly consistent with what was approved for preliminary, right? And we have signed the preliminary Mylars and were able to compare the final subdivision plans against what was approved for preliminary. So our comment letter, Labella's comment letter on the final subdivision application, just fairly minor technical issues, nothing too, nothing too serious. Let's see, protecting existing facilities. We want, one of the things that we asked Brennan to look at is relocating one of the sanitary sewer laterals away from, there's a pull-off. There's a pull-off on the side of the road which allows, I think, access to the stormwater facility. So you're going to, my understanding is you're going to be doing some trenching, right, to install some of the utilities, which is going to be allowed by the highway superintendent. And this just, this avoids maybe cutting into that little parking area on the side of the roadway. But maybe that would get repaved anyway with their, with the Town's capital project. And I think they want to repave that in 2027, Collier Crossing. I did want to call Brennan's attention to one of the sheets in here. Maybe last, Suzie, can I, can we switch to my display here? So I'm on page, I think it's the grading plan.
You got drawing number or sheet number?
C200.
Okay.
This is fairly, fairly minor. I just wanted to, and it has to do with Lot 1, which is-
That's the existing house, right?
Is down here. This will be actually a new house.
Oh, it's on County Road 9.
On County Road 9. The driveway, Brennan has done some work to get that driveway to be less than 10% slope for the design and construction standards. And I just wanted to zoom in to the detail that's, that's over here on the, on the bottom left side of the page. See if I can zoom in there.
Lot 1 is new. I just want to clarify that in our announcement, it says Lot 1 is where the existing house is and it's actually Lot 2, correct?
We have modifications through sketch plan and preliminary.
It's Lot 2, though?
Yeah, rearranged.
Yeah, I know you've rearranged some lots and stuff, so I just want to clarify that.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
I see it right there. You're talking about this, Wes?
Yeah, the profile, maybe, I think maybe that part didn't get updated. Is that, is that all that is? Okay, all right.
Sorry about that.
No, that's quite all right. That's totally fine. This is a, that's the purpose of the final subdivision, just to clean, clean up minor things like that. And I don't know that we had that in our letter, so.
Yeah, happy to make that a change.
Maybe also, I'll zoom back in there and maybe it's not relevant anymore because you did the grading change. We wanted to talk about the change between this slope here and, and what this is and provide maybe some form of, what do they call it, a SAG curve?
Vertical curve.
Vertical curve?
SAG vertical curve, yeah.
And maybe it's not relevant anymore because of the grading that you-
Yeah, yeah, we'll definitely show that better graphically.
Okay, all right. So the letter of credit issue, I think, we acknowledge Brennan's points that he made in his response letter to Labella regarding the letter of credit. And I think what we'd like to do is, is work with the town and Brennan on doing something that makes sense as opposed to, you know, maybe, maybe what we were initially asking. So we don't have a problem if the Planning Board wants to move forward with approving the final subdivision conditioned on, one of the conditions being satisfaction of the Labella letter. So we're pretty happy with where, where things stand.
You want to comment at all on the conservation easements? We've had some conversations over the past couple of months about the level of the easement that's there and what they can and can't do on-
Yeah, I think, so Brennan, I remember you commenting at the last meeting when the preliminary subdivision was, was approved and the type of conservation easement that you were proposing.
Yeah, the specific constraints. It was, there was three levels, right? There's, there's the open space, then the specific conditions, and then there's the forever wild, right? So we chose the second one, which basically allows for some use of the property. The biggest thing is a number of mowings, or not even mowings, I should say brushhogs that can happen through a year, in a few years' period. We, in that document, we edited it to say two brushhogs per. What other things that could be used in the, in the conservation area would be home garden, no clear cutting, regular forestry practices. The Conservation Board also reviewed that document. They had a couple of changes in wording. Completely fine with the way that they, they would like to see that presented. Basically is, it's not, you know, you can't mow it as lawn, but you can maintain it as field, maintain, remove dead falls and maintain, put a home garden in it.
So no call logging, not that they're logging for commercial, but they can't just cut down trees?
Right.
The trees stay. They can keep the lawn or the-
Brush.
Field or brush, you know, cut, but not manicured. I guess that's my, how I would put it, but, okay.
Would there be any special considerations for lots 2 and 3 with the flagged wetlands in terms of what they can do there?
Question. I don't know if that's something that you'd normally be able to do something with anyway? I mean, it's part of-
We didn't specifically call out anything with the wetlands. They're, they're non-classified. So there's DEC or Army Corps necessarily haven't taken them under their jurisdiction. But I don't think that there's anything that is allowed in the conservation easement that wouldn't be allowed otherwise, right? Maybe you can't clear cut a wetland, right? We said you can't clear cut it in the conservation easement, so.
I just see burying a tractor and a brush hog. All of a sudden you got a new pond, right?
That'd be a poor choice to try.
Well, you could think of it the other way. If somebody didn't want the wet area, they might fill it in. But they can't do that in a conservation easement anyway.
Right, yeah.
There you go, okay.
Does limit land grading.
Yeah, okay. I'm good.
Okay.
Sure.
Al, any questions?
No, no questions. No, most of them.
Ernie Scott? You guys are all set? Okay, I think we're good. So with that, we can put forward the resolution. Collier Park Final Subdivision. Application 05S, FS 2023. Whereas Planning Board made the following findings a fact, and there are 15 of them. Whereas Planning Board classified the project as a Type 1 action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act and initiated lead agency coordination process by transmitting Part 1 of the SEACR Environmental Assessment Form and Project Information to involved and interested agencies and issued a negative declaration on October 24th, 2023. Whereas Section 21148 of the Victor Town Code requires all development to be consistent with the current town design and construction standards and the access management standards of Chapter 55 unless specifically waived by the Planning Board. And whereas Chapter 55 of the Town Code is not applicable to the Collier Crossing roadway as the road is not a public arterial collector or local through roadway and a traffic impact study is not required as the project will not be generating 100 or more peak hour trips. And whereas the Labella Associates memorandum dated May 31st, 2012 provides a recommendation for how to consider requests for a waiver to the number of single-family residences on a dead-end street by minimizing potential impacts as a consequence of greater front setbacks for properties near the dead-end access or buffering along the roadway for properties near the dead-end access, dead-end street access. And whereas the applicant is proposing new lots at the entrance to the dead-end road, not at the terminal end of the dead-end road, and proposes a front setback of 40 feet from the right of way to Collier Crossing, which complies with the front setback requirements of R2 zoning district and provides a greater setback than the existing homes immediately to the north that have an approved 30-foot setback that was approved as part of a clustered subdivision in 2007. Moreover, the applicant has incorporated a landscaping plan that includes 14 new trees to be planted along the frontage of the new lots being created along Collier Park. Now therefore be it resolved, the Planning Board hereby waive Section 2934 of the Town's Design and Construction Standards as authorized in Section 21148 of the Victor Town Code so as to allow four new lots to front on and access Collier Crossing, allowing a total of 30 single-family residences to be accessed by Collier Crossing. And be it further resolved, the Planning Board hereby waive Section 2792 of the Town's Design and Construction Standards for lots 3, 4, 5, and 6 to allow roof and basement drainage to discharge to on-site infiltration trenches to promote opportunity for groundwater recharge and reduction in surface water runoff. And be it further resolved, that the final subdivision application, Comarc Holdings LLC, be approved with the following conditions. Conditions to be addressed prior to the chairman's signature on the preliminary subdivision plan. Number one is standard. Number two is standard. Number three, that the comments in a letter dated January 4th, 2024 from Labella Associates be addressed. That's what Wes just pointed out. Number four, that the comments in a letter dated December 15th from the stormwater manager be addressed. Ongoing conditions include number one, major subdivision to comply with the Town of Victor Design and Construction Standards. That all, number two, that all conservation easement markers be shown on final subdivision plans. Number three, should underground water conditions be encountered during construction? That the developer is to address the encroachment and impact to the underground water conditions to the satisfaction of the town engineer. Number four, that the request of Planning and Building Department, a pre-construction meeting shall be held prior to the start of construction. Number five, Town of Victor Highway work permit be obtained prior to construction of curb cuts on Collier Crossing. And number six, that an Ontario County Highway work permit be obtained before construction of curb cuts on County Route 9. And be it further resolved that the Planning Board Secretary distribute the Planning Board's approval letter. So with that, I'll entertain a motion for approval of that resolution as spoken.
Move.
Ernie moves?
I'll second.
Not seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Carried five zero. All set? Okay, as I said, item three is removed until January 23rd meeting. Item four, the Elias Soil Stabilization, 6949 Valentine Road. Owner Brent Elias, applicant is requesting site plan approval for the soil restoration stabilization of the parcel and work performed during recent pool installation. And as I understand it from Wes and that we've had some conversations since our last meeting.
Yeah, I'd be happy to defer to the applicant on this to give a little background of where, where he's at since where you've come since the last Planning Board meeting. That would be helpful for the board.
Sure, yep.
Wes?
Brett Elias, owner of the property. So since the last meeting, we've, we've had a Zoom, Zoom call with Labella, my engineer Scott, who's left, and the town, Keith Maynard. And we discussed, well, the goal was to get through a couple of our questions with the town and Labella and get on the same page and then finish the site plans for approval, which were submitted on Friday of last week. So I was concerned that Labella didn't have a chance to review them by tonight, but I'm here. And apparently Keith was able to look at them and hand us over some comments. I have, that was earlier this morning. I have since responded to Keith through Lisa. And that's where we stand. And now I'm here tonight, so.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
So Mary Stebline from Labella Associates, she has looked at the new information that's come in, including the updated site plan. And there's been a lot of work that's been done. And Labella, we're very happy with the way things are going. We're not quite yet, we, Mary and I, looking at the way the record stands, we're not quite yet ready for a resolution on this. However, I think we're very close and Mary and Labella would like to just touch base with the applicant's design professional, Mr. Harder, to get a better understanding of some of the drainage analysis. We see that some calculations in here in the drainage analysis, but there's some questions where Mary would like to connect the dots and have a conversation prior to the Planning Board taking action. So we're very happy with the way things stand. Things look, the site plan looks, looks good in general, but we just want to have a follow-up conversation prior to you guys taking action. So that's, that's what I have to offer today.
Okay. Anybody on the board have a question for the applicant or Wes? No?
No.
No? Okay. That's not here.
And so, so for what it's worth, I would, I would suspect that we would be satisfied- And so, so for what it's worth, I would, I would suspect that we would be satisfied in prep, in time for the next meeting.
Okay.
And that if, if you guys were satisfied with the updated site plan, maybe you're relying a lot on the town engineer, which is fine, and Keith, I think we'll be ready.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I think that's a good plan to be able to finalize this at the next board meeting. So I appreciate your working with our town engineer and Keith.
No problem. Yep. Just wanted, want to write.
And is this much for you and protection of your property as it is?
I understand.
Things are done?
Yep.
Well.
There's been a lot of, there's been a lot of establishment of vegetation onsite. Is that what I understand?
Some of those photos do show that are cycling through there. We're, we're, that was before, or actually that was the day after the incident. So there was some vegetation, natural vegetation, but then we cleaned it all up and that's a, that's a shot to the right of what it looks like now. Well, it looks a lot better now, but, and then the matting over there on the left and that's all established now and everything's green, very green. I would say ninety, ninety-five percent coverage of grass. Even there, that's all the hydro seed, that's all grass.
One of the features that we're seeing on the site plan now is a stone line swale that kind of parallels the driveway, right?
That's right. That's right. Yep, we're going to try to make sure that's, that's adequate for the flows anticipated, right? So we're gonna, there's a couple of high spots in there. We're gonna dig it down and make it work.
Okay, so there was a
Along the driveway there.
Kim, can you, can you remind me, or the board maybe, there was a deadline by, by which they needed to submit an updated site plan and they've, and they've met that criteria. Is that correct? Okay.
Yeah, we, we made it, the resolution to be the following, you know, next two weeks from now.
Okay.
So, but action needed to be taken by this meeting, which it sounds like you guys have more than accomplished, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we needed to submit by the fifth.
So.
Last week, yeah, last week, last Friday.
It's, you followed everything.
Some sort of plan, right? You know, and then get the commentary going and that's what we're doing.
Make sure there's discussions are going on and communication is there, so.
Yep.
Oh, good.
It's just, it's just been complicated and we wanted to, I just wanted to tell Lobella and the town the history of the project and town's been out there, Lobella hasn't been there, you know, there's a lot to be seen out there.
Yeah.
A lot of history. And I'm trying to provide photos and progress and I think you guys are getting the drift that we're playing ball and we want to get it done, so.
Yeah, and certainly from Keith's, Keith's perspective, that's been going well, so.
Yeah, yep. So.
Okay, well, I guess we're on for the next meeting and
Looking for the finish line, you know.
I don't blame you.
We're close, very close.
All right.
All right, so we're all set, I think. Unless you have anything for us. It sounds like you're good. Do go.
I don't think so unless Lisa wants to forward my responses to Keith, to Lobella. I don't know. Maybe it's a good idea, maybe it's not.
Yeah, the ones you just sent Keith has not seen yet because he was out of the office this afternoon, but it was sent over to Lobella, but not till later in the afternoon, so.
All right, no problem.
He'll see it when he gets back.
Okay.
Great, thank you very much.
All right.
Okay, last item on the agenda, Hardy Subdivision. It's an informal discussion. Marshall Hardy out on North Road, I believe, yep. Has some ideas for a change in property.
Good evening.
How are you?
I'm Marshall Hardy. I want to start by first thanking Lisa for getting me to the right meeting on the right date. I was using last year's calendar. And I insisted I was right. I own thirty-six acres at seventy-five ninety North Road here in Victor. Originally, oh, different, different order, do you? That's the thirty-six acres. We'll, we'll, we'll be fine. Go back to the, to the last one. That's the thirty-six acres. I originally had bought forty-six acres out of an eight, a seventy-eight acre four parcel tract. In two thousand and two, I sold off five acres out here and started to build my home. My house is located at the back of the thirty-six acres, which is the acreage shown in red. In two thousand and four, I sold off another five acres here to make that a three-lot subdivision. In the, in red is my thirty-six acres. The hatched is the conservation district, which is fifty percent of the property. When I originally sold off the first five acres, both my forty-one acres and the five acres had fifty percent conservation district. In two thousand and four, I came in and asked to change the conservation district so that half of the property on the second lot was also, half of it was conservation district. Right now, there's a twenty-foot common easement that starts here and is the driveway to North Road. All three parcels have access to North Road, but we use a common driveway, but they do have frontage on North Road. The driveway, I maintain the driveway. There's no formal agreement or anything and I've been there twenty-plus years. The driveway is composed of three different sections. The first section, which extends from North Road to the first lot driveway is twelve, thirteen feet wide gravel with asphalt millings over the top of it. Second portion of drive, which goes from here to here, is gravel and it's ten plus, ten, eleven feet wide. The remainder of the driveway is ten feet, just gravel. And what I'm looking to do, what I'm hopeful of doing, is being able to, if you go to that next, next slide, please. It's a little difficult to see, but my house is back here. What I would like to do is sell off ten or twelve acres, which is outlined in red here, and maintain twenty-six acres, which is in green, with the hopes of being able to build a new home for me on that. My house right now has got forty-two hundred square feet plus a thousand square foot garage and I'm, I'm there by myself. I'm looking to build in this area here, which is outside of any of the existing conservation districts, and it would be a let's see. It would be a thirty-four hundred square foot building, but twenty-five hundred square feet of that would be for storage. I have some cars I've accumulated over the years that are, I guess you could call them classics, Mustangs and Corvettes. And a lot of collection that I've accumulated over the year in car parts and more stuff than you would care to know. So it's really, it's going to be what they call a barn dominium, where the largest part is the storage area and then I'm going to have nine hundred square feet to live in. And I'm here just to present that information and start to get some idea of what issues you see so I am prepared to go forward as best as I can be. So I'm looking for some informal input before I start the process formally.
Okay. I guess the first question I would have is, is there any need to change or modify the conservation easements or you're fine with the way they are?
I'm sorry?
The, the conservation easements that are on there that you showed in the other, the red, I don't know, Suzie, can you go back to the last image? Right there. So you're, you said you're not in the conservation easement with this proposed building, correct?
I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing you for a sec.
Maybe I'm not loud enough.
Thank you. It's not fun getting old.
Yeah, I know. And so the building you want to construct is going in the area that is not in a conservation district?
That is correct.
And you have no reason or need to alter the conservation easements on the site, correct?
That is correct, although what I would like to do is if I do split it out into a twelve acre and a twenty-four acre parcel, I'd like to shift the conservation districts around so that both parcels have fifty percent like I did back in two thousand and four.
That would be interesting. Are you planning on selling off that parcel, that twelve acres?
I'm planning on selling off the twelve acres that the current house and barn are on, yes.
Oh, so you want to move more conservation easement on part, the house
To that area, yes.
So there is an interest in doing that, it sounds like.
It's not necessary, but it's just something where, it's what I did for the other two property owners.
Okay, well, the issue I'm concerned about is conservation easements are good when they're, you know, consolidated and I want to make sure that you're looking at it as not fragmenting more than it is. That would be my perspective on that need, so you understand what I'm?
I do, I do.
Yeah, okay, I figured. So, and then the building itself, it's mostly garage, it sounds like, or at least
That is correct.
Cause you have all that, I assume, that, cause you have some nice cars and
Yes.
You want to keep them weather protected, I'm assuming, so. Okay, well, I'm gonna
Almost all of the property is, is wooded, either with mature hardwoods or it's part of an old Christmas tree farm and there's a lot of pine trees on there. I don't have any idea how I would change the conservation district, but what I'm thinking is I might like to put some back in here and reduce some in here.
So the question I would have for Wes perhaps, as looking at the Town Code, you're making now four parcels, right?
It would be four since I first bought it in ninety-eight.
So that makes it a major subdivision. Does that change the requirements for, say, the driveway, for instance? Does it need to be paved? It doesn't need, you know, because you've got four houses. So it's, or does it need to be widened at all? Because you said it necks down to like ten feet, I think, for the last five or six hundred feet or whatever it is that goes to the house. So I'm, I guess I'm asking Wes if there's a requirement that kicks in.
I know the Design and Construction Standards does have a, a standard detail for driveways, which would generally, would, would apply regardless if it was a major or minor subdivision, is my, is my understanding. But, so I, I think, I, I think I would, you would expect to see that the driveway would meet those requirements if you're adding yet another, another home. So regardless of whether it's a major or minor subdivision, I, I would suspect that would be the case.
Okay, so those are some flag, red flags for me, so I'm going to open up to the rest of the board. Joe?
So relative to the, to the conservation easements, Troutbrook is, is protected, protected by easements on both sides. Does the, as the, as it goes to the east of your property, does that, do you know if the conservation easement for your neighbors also continues to protect the stream?
Right now, the, the stream is in the middle of this crosshatching here.
Yes, sir.
Yep, and comes down through. It is protected on this piece of property as well. It's a conservation district is all through here.
Okay. The reason I ask is just looking for some, some continuity. And you, you mentioned perhaps taking that eastern piece of the existing houses' property, the, what is it, the twelve acres and, and putting some conservation easement on the east side of that as well?
Right, the way it's set up right now, that twelve acres would be pretty much right in here as well as down through the driveway. So this would have almost no conservation easement to it.
Okay. What I'm, what I'm looking to see is perhaps if there's any continuity, one of the purposes of a conservation easement is perhaps to establish wildlife corridors or maintain wildlife corridors, and I'd be very curious to see what the contiguous properties show for conservation easements. If you could, or if you're enhancing that or detracting from existing easements on your neighbors' properties. That'd be a consideration, I think.
I guess as you come forward with that planning part of it, we need to find out what's around it and maybe the town can help figure out those plans and find out where the conservation easements are in your adjacent, in your neighbors. So that might help you decide where pieces might work best.
And again, that's not my biggest concern. Quite frankly, my biggest concern is the driveway.
That's a long one.
Beg your pardon?
It's a long driveway.
It's half a mile long, correct?
Can I just interrupt just a second? Marshall, I'm sorry.
Sure.
I don't want to push you out of the way. I've been known to do that to people.
You've got to push for card.
So on, I think on this, this map, and if you look at it, it does show the proposed conservation easement on parcel three and I think parcel two, part of it, right? Yeah, I think that's what Joe Limbeck was maybe inquiring about. Joe, is that what you were thinking?
As well as the neighbors surrounding it.
I don't believe there's probably any conservation easement on, to the south. I think it's, it's probably just on his parcel and those two parcels he created.
Then it's a moot point.
Okay, all right, just for clarification. You're welcome.
Thanks, Kim. Anything else, Joe?
Oh, I'm good, thank you.
Al?
Just a question. Currently it's a shared drive with the three parcels and did you indicate that there's no formal agreement? There's just kind of
There is no formal agreement. The, the, this parcel here was owned by a gentleman that recently passed who was an amputee. He couldn't maintain it. I, I've been a civil engineer, I was for forty-six years and it was just easier for me to do it that way. It got done when I wanted to get it done, the way I wanted to get it done. And we just prorated the price based on length.
Yeah, so I guess my, my suggestion would be some, now with a fourth parcel and that, in the event that someday you're not there to coordinate across the, the tenants, some type of formalization of the easement.
Yeah, I anticipated that that would be required, you know, and I have no problem with that. I don't know how much longer I want to maintain it anyway.
That's all I had, Joe.
Okay. Scott?
I think that was a good point by Al. You know, what is the, what covers the access legally amongst the benefited properties? That was a question I had as well. But, but a question that jumped out in my mind when I looked at your drawing is satisfaction of the lot frontage requirement and how you deal with that. And I'm curious to know how it was dealt with prior to this application. It's my understanding that, well, what you're showing me right now, you're showing me a landlocked piece of property that's accessed through a driveway that's shared by others. I don't, I don't think that you can legally do a subdivision on top of a subdivision, on, on top of a landlocked parcel, I guess. So I would, my point is I think that issue should be taken a close look at. Maybe there's some sort of variance procedure or something. I mean, I've been down this road before on other parcels and it's, it's difficult when you get into these situations.
Well, that's true, Scott. You've got two parcels then, not just, you will have two parcels that share the one forty-nine foot access point, I guess, on North Road.
There's an access point there, but the right of way seems to be quite a distance away. A public street.
It's okay.
Don't mean to push you out of the way. It looks as though the, the parcels do have some frontage on North Road, maybe not the required
Oh, do they?
Frontage.
Yeah, all three parts have frontage. The parcel, this parcel has sixty-three foot of frontage.
Okay.
The, the bigger parcel on the common driveway has eighty
Eighty-five.
Five, and then this one has sixty-three, six, or sixty-eight.
So I don't know whether, and I don't remember, we've met with Marshall several times. I don't remember, and maybe Lisa could help me remember Wes, if he did have variances. don't remember, and maybe Lisa could help me remember Wes, if he did have variances for when those parcels were created. But to your point, and I think maybe we talked about this, Marshall, that parcel that you're going to create probably would need an area variance for frontage on North Road.
Well, what I was thinking, and there were no variances for the others, to the best of my memory, but what I could do is create a corridor from this corner here down through this corridor by redistributing property off of this parcel here.
Can you do that? I mean, your neighbor's going to have to, now, the owner of that parcel would have to agree to any changes, correct?
And I can, I have had some informal conversations with the gentleman, and he doesn't have a problem with that. What I would do is if anything got taken off of his side for this parcel's access, I would add back in another area for him, so he'd still have five acres when he was done.
Okay. Sounds like an interesting geometric, geometric problem.
I think too, it still wouldn't meet the requirement of the hundred foot of frontage.
How much frontage does it need?
You need a hundred feet per lot.
Yep, this, that was not required when I did it the first time.
So you would need that. So I'm thinking, to Scott's point, I think you would probably need to apply for variance as part of the subdivision application.
My final comment would be whether you've reviewed this with a fire marshal.
Fire marshal has already been up the driveway. When this gentleman was taken to the hospital, we had to get the fire chief, or the fire department to come over and get him out of the house because he was not ambulatory, and he drove all the way back up. He was curious and was checking it. But I have concrete trucks and everything else that've come up there, there's not a problem, and there's a large turnaround up here by the house, as well as there are several bypass areas on the length of the driveway, there's four or five of them, which I included some pictures, you can see where cars are parked.
Yeah, that certainly would be important, I mean, they've commented on things like that for a long driveway in the past on other proposals, so having that-
That's all I have.
Would you be relocating the driveway?
I'm sorry?
Would you be relocating the driveway?
No.
So you're just tying into it with a spur for the new, for your new house, it sounds like, sorry. So you're tying into it as like a little-
I would, I would be tying into it-
Where the building is.
Right in here.
Anything else, Ernie?
Yeah, what is that rectangle there just north of the driveway on the lot you're proposing?
Are you talking about in the, right there?
Yes.
That's his house, proposed, proposed building.
Well, that's where you're proposing to put the house?
That's where I would propose to put the barn dominium.
That's a good.
Yeah, I hate to call it a house because it's not much of a house.
It's kind of like a tiny house with a big garage.
That's where I am at my, my stage in life, I don't need a large house, that was-
All one level, all that kind of stuff, right?
That was the wife's house.
Always difficult when life changes like that, sorry. Anything else, Ernie?
No, that's it.
Wes, any other thoughts or comments for Marshall before we send him on his way?
I think you guys have already touched on it, and just, just the challenge of getting the, the road frontage, meeting the road frontage requirements or obtaining a variance, and I think what I heard that you've had already an informal conversation with the property owner just to the, looks like west, west or south.
Yes, yes, to the west.
On maybe adjusting that property line so that you have adequate frontage, be it, you would be, probably be required to obtain a variance. That's, that's the only concern that I would have.
So you could get any frontage.
Yeah, yeah, to have, to have any frontage.
There's only two hundred and something feet of road frontage to begin with from this whole huge original parcel, right?
And I can remember the discussion when I first did the subdivision in two thousand and two was, we want this not to be a landlocked parcel, just in case something goes wrong and everybody gets mad at everybody, they still have a way of getting out of their driveway, or out of their property and onto North Road. So that's why I say I have no problem in making that another flagged parcel.
Yeah, Ernie and I were both on the board at that time, and I do remember some of these details, so.
You do remember.
I do.
I don't.
Why the questions? So, do you have any questions for us, other than-
No, I, I, I was looking to see if anybody just said, this is terrible, or, you know.
You got a lot of problems.
Did you want us to say that? A little challenge is not bad. I know that the board can be worked with, but I just don't want to get into this where I've spent money on a survey and I've done a site plan map, and I've seen this in my career before where suddenly an idea comes up that can't be addressed, and I just don't have that kind of time and money.
I would suggest resolving the frontage issue straight away. If that can't be somehow resolved geometrically and however else, then you're kind of done, but.
The conservation district issue, it doesn't bother me if-
We can work with you on that, I think, so. It's, it's the driveway and the, and the frontage requirements, you, obviously we don't want landlocked your property, so, and it's pretty narrow through there, right? You only got twenty feet at, at points, so.
Less than that.
Yeah. So you may want to look at that whole strip between, you know, that divides parcels two and three. You may have to do something creative with, with those two owners to give you enough room to then get those two parcels, there'd be two little thin strips, that's the thing.
Yep.
So.
Understood.
One, one last comment from Labella here is, I think the Design and Construction Standards also limits the number of, of homes that can access off of a shared or common driveway to three. So that's not to say that you might not, you, you might still be able to have four, it was just the planning board would need to provide a waiver to that standard.
Yeah, I was aware of that.
Okay, all right. So, but I can't, I, I agree with all the comments that the rest of the planning board members have, have shared, you know, a shared access agreement, common maintenance agreement for the driveway, frontage and, and so forth. Makes sense.
Okay. Unless you have anything else, questions for us?
That's all I can ask for, I appreciate your time.
I think you're hearing some, at least accepting and positive responses with some concerns, but something that can be worked out, I think, so, we'll see you next time.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Appreciate your coming in. That's it?
Move to adjourn.
I hear a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Scott seconds, no discussion. Enjoy your evening, everyone.